Thank you.
Mr. Schrader? Anyone else wishing to address the Commission?
Mr. Schrader, I'm sorry, would you just formally state your address for the record? My office address is 401 Jackson Street, Sandusky. I'd just like to point out to the Commission, this is a paper alley which needs to be made by the city, it's never been opened, used by the city residents, and there's never been any city ordinance for me, this is consequently, it was just an alley on paper. The official vacation of the alley.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else present wishing to address any of our regular business items? Not, we are delighted to have members of Sandusky's Fire Department with us, and there we have two firefighters. Do we have a new firefighter, Chief?
Sorry?
We have a new firefighter?
Yes, sir.
We do. Well, let you take it from there, Chief, okay? Have City Managers?
I know these.
Yeah, well, the way the City Manager's getting there, he might need DMS help, but we thought we'd start off with you, Chief.
Would this show me the property of the, so if you would personally, I think it was
I'm assuming some of those young folks here were family members. We hope you have many years of service, and you're joining a great institution with a long and proud history, and so good luck to you, sir. And you folks are free to stay for our hours-long meeting, if you'd like.
He's got a big excuse.
So, we, this is the Drive Sober Campaign Week. I think it's coordinated around the state and the country. Mr. Twine, I understand that you have proclamations presented.
Yes, sir. And basically, this proclamation is urging everyone to drive sober. Whereas from August through September, law enforcement nationwide will be joining the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration in the High Visibility Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over Crackdown Campaign. And whereas the crackdown will include high visibility enforcement throughout Sandusky, and will run from August 14th through September 2nd, 2019. And whereas officers in the Sandusky Police Department will be aggressively looking for drunk drivers during the crackdown, and will arrest anyone caught driving drunk. And whereas although it is illegal in all 50 states, the District of Columbia and Puerto Rico to drive drunk or having a blood alcohol concentration of .08 or higher, far too many people across the nation get behind the wheel after consuming too much alcohol. And whereas every year, more than one-third or 38% of all motor vehicle traffic deaths involve drivers who are drunk, and holidays such as Labor Day are particularly dangerous. And whereas drunk driving takes a particularly heavy toll among young drivers, and whereas research has shown that high visibility enforcement, like the Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over Campaign, reduces drunk driving fatalities by as much as 20%. And by joining this nationwide effort, Sandusky's roadways will be made safer for everyone throughout the Labor Day period. And whereas the Sandusky Police Department wants to remind everyone, getting behind the wheel, drunk is a terrible idea, as it impairs your ability to operate a vehicle safely, impairs your judgment and good sense about whether you can or should drive. And whereas being arrested for driving drunk brings a wide range of negative consequences into one's life, such as jail time, loss of driver licenses, and steep financial consequences, such as higher insurance rates, attorney fees, court costs, lost time at work, and the potential loss of one's job, along with tremendous personal embarrassment. And whereas drunk, well, whereas driving drunk is simply not worth the risk. Now, therefore, the Sandusky City Commission does hereby proclaim and announce, on this 14th through September 2nd, 2019, as Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over 2019 Crackdown Weeks, and the City of Sandusky, and urge all citizens to drive sober or get pulled over while traveling on our roadways, dated this 12th day of August, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Twine. The country's actually made great progress in reducing the number of drunk driving fatalities. This program has made an impact in reminding people repeatedly, over and over and over again, tougher laws and crackdowns have helped developments like Uber, whatnot, have helped along with the young folks in the community, I think, take this more seriously than their, than their older, some of their relatives, so great to see that attitude among them. We have a public hearing regarding the proposed vacation of a 10-foot alley for three parcels on First Street and Second Street of Wildwood. I understand, as our player, you would like to make the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner President Murray. Yes, this is for Parcels 57-03841, 57-03858, 57-03857. They're located between First and Second Streets along Wildwood Street. The adjacent properties are both a mix of residential and rental land. The existing zoning is commercial renovation, and the Commissioner is requesting to vacate a portion of the 10-foot alley. Existing use, as mentioned previously, is an improved right-of-way. The applicant intends to use the vacated alley to construct a person's storage unit. Plague and Commission has recommended a re-move to the City Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Altz. If there's any questions or comments, this is a public hearing. If anyone wishing to address this topic, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and share with us your thoughts on this one again. This is the first item on our regular agenda, so perhaps some more discussion, then seeing no one stepping to the microphone, this hearing is now closed. Commissioners, we have a number of communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation, so someone care to make a motion to accept those?
Second.
An motion and second discussion. Law objection, the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Commissioners, we have a number of items on the draft consent agenda. Are there any items any Commissioner would like to have placed on the regular agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
Item F, please.
Item F, be placed on the regular agenda. Any others? If not, then Mrs. Cresser, would you present the consent agenda without item F, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A is approval of an agreement with the State of Ohio Office of the Auditor for preparation of the December 31, 2019, December 31, 2020, and December 31, 2021 Comprehensive Annual Financial Reports. Item B, payment to Software Solutions Incorporated for the annual software support fee. Item C is authorizing a grant, two grant applications with ODAD for the Rural Transit Program Grant, and the Bus and Bus Facilities Grant for the Sandusky Transit System. Item D is a lease agreement with the Sandusky Bay Rowing Association for the boat launch and shell storage areas at the end of River Avenue. Item E is the Bridge Inspection Agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the calendar year 2020 to 2022. And the new item F would be a liquor permit transfer for Zuckman at 1186 Cleveland Road.
Commissioners, having heard the items on the consent agenda, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move that we accept the consent agenda and declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions A through F, as drafted and presented to the City Commission under the consent agenda, shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions A through F, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
That's been a motion and second discussion. There was a question that came up during public comments regarding damage to the dock. It was not aware that there was any damage. Is there any further information from staff about the state of the dock, whether there are any repairs that are anticipated?
Through the Commissioner President, to Commissioner Murray, or through the Commissioner President, to the Commissioner President. I texted Jason Wolling to see if he knew anything about that. I was not aware of it. I have not heard back yet, but if it does come up, I can, then if he texts back, then I made a report. Aaron, I don't know if Aaron, if you have details, I'll be right.
Mr. President, what happened out there was, it's a floating dock, so it has a fixed length to the pole. The elevated water, it's a couple feet higher than normal, the pole wasn't long enough for the dock. It got some big waves in, it came up and it landed on it, and it did get the contractor right out there in 90. I'm not sure that it was safe. We'll see what happens. I'll check tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Twine. Other comments or questions regarding the consent agenda items? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion first, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and resolutions, please.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Both ordinances and resolutions are adopted. Mrs. Cresser, I always forget, is item F now item one, or does that go at the end?
Yes. Yes, we do that one first.
Okay, present that one, please.
Would be a request from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for the transfer of a D1, D2, D3, D3A, and D6 liquor permits from CDGVT Columbus LLC, doing business as Kleda Irish Pubs Columbus, Ohio, to Noble Access LLC, 121 East Market Street in Sandusky. And it is requested the clerk be authorized to notify the Division of Liquor Control. The City does not request a hearing.
Commissioners, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington, I make a motion to have Commissioner Clerk Telekrist notify the Division of Liquor Control that the City does not request a hearing.
Second.
An motion and second discussion. Cresser, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Stane.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That motion is approved. Mrs. Cresser, would you present, it is item number two now, vacation of the alley.
Yes, this is a first reading of an ordinance made needing a portion of an alley located west of Wildwood Street, between lots 400 to 403 on Second Street, and lots 404 to 407 on First Street, within the city, as set forth on the vacation plan, a copy of which is marked Exhibit A2, attached to this ordinance and incorporated herein.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed? Someone care to make a motion to put this ordinance through, please?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I move that, uh, the, uh, I'm sorry, I passed. This is...
With respect to item number, it is now item two, the proposed vacation of the alley has been presented to the City. Is there someone on the Commission who will make a motion?
All right, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Waddington. I move for the adoption of this ordinance passed at first reading according to, with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
That a motion and second.
Mr. Waddington.
Just before we go to a resolution, Section 13.
Oh, Section, I'm sorry, Section 13.
Section 13. And, Mr. Waddington, I understand that you recommend legislation to us and the Planning Commission there as well.
Yeah.
Discussion or comment regarding the, regarding the motion, the ordinance?
Mr. Chairman.
Brady.
I noted that there was, what this correspondent tells us is there is a slight objection regarding curb cuts now being required on First Street due to vacation of alleys. The question I have is, how significant of an issue is this? Is this something that we really need to pay attention to, or who are we disenfranchising by doing this?
Mr. Waddington, is that something you really would address?
Through you, Mr. President. Commissioner Brady, as you may recall, this property, property around the right-of-way that is being proposed to be vacated, was recently rezoned. And during the rezoning process, the Planning Commission asked staff to review a possible overlay district for what could be done on First Street. So, as part of the, what we're looking at as the First Street overlay district, or to make it more pedestrian-friendly, one of the items that came up was the curb cuts on First Street, and not being as walkable if people are coming in and out of the driveways. As you know, the bike path will be on the north side, and this property is on the south side. We were asking the property owner, or not the, to be property owner that wants to construct the storage building, to access the property from the side, if they are joining J. S. Street, or from the rear, but not on First Street. So, we do recommend that there's not a curb cut on First Street for this property.
As I understand it, it's mine, and that does not impact, you know, I understand where the Planning Commission would like the curb cut to be, and that does not impact the question of whether or not we should or should not vacate the alley, is that right?
Through you, Mr. President. That is correct, and I think maybe, as a part of the question, I should have answered that the applicant that is proposing to construct the storage building stated that his concern or their concern with not having a curb cut on First Street is that the trailers, or the trailer, whatever they have coming in and out, that the access through the property would be able to be conducive. The Planning Commission still had the opinion that the curb cut should not be on First Street. But yes, you're correct.
And if I understand it correctly, for the, the question of where the curb cut occurs is one that is presented to the Planning Commission. They decide that issue?
So, through you, Mr. President, this is not a commercial project, it's a personal storage project, which has not gone through, historically doesn't go through the Planning Commission. So, we will be, when it comes to the Department, we will be recommending that they do not put curb cut on First Street. And Engineering Department, they would have to give permission to put a curb cut in on First Street. There's some more oversight to be had on this project.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Waddington. I just wanted to see it on the screen, to see where we are, in fact, and just give a greater idea.
Those following along, paper or electronic, lines page 82, with a backup presented to the Commission. That was your presentation, Mr. Murray.
I figured this would be a good chance to use all this new technology. And now that we have it up, Mr. Chairman, maybe Ms. Bindington could articulate the pros and cons of what the staff's thoughts are.
Ms. Bindington, do you have anything to add to what you said before?
Through you, Mr. President. I don't really, the Planning Commission and staff have the recommendation that there shouldn't be additional curb cuts there coming off of First Street if we're trying to make it more pedestrian-friendly and slow down the traffic there. I don't know if this picture helps. You visualize it, but I don't have anything additional to add.
Commissioners, additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, the alley vacation, as you can see, there's no, unless someone told you, you wouldn't know there was an alley there. So, it's all grass, I see no reason why we would not allow for the vacation alley. With regard to curb cuts, with the picture we're looking at now, if you'll notice along that street, number of curb, you don't have to enlarge it, leave it where you would if you wish, would. On both sides of the street, there are many, many, many curb cuts. A single additional curb cut for the use of this facility is certainly not going to change the safety factor on that street. So, when you get to that point, I would really, other than just the personal preference of staff, something that indicates there's a reason that this individual shouldn't go forward with whatever they're trying to do that says there's no curb cut. The Planning Commission didn't give a whole lot of detail to give me any reason to believe that there's any foundation for suggesting that another driveway, another residential driveway would be, would cause anything, any problem whatsoever. Additionally, I think you said the bike path is on the other side of the street. If you look at Bimini Drive in Nantucket, which is essentially kitty corner across the street, the amount of concrete coming off of, off the corner of Bimini Drive and First Street in terms of, if you're going to say a driveway is a problem for safety, hardly compares to the individual driveways. And I think folks that walk the street are custom all over town walking past driveways. So, I really would appreciate some depth before we get into a, before we say you can't build a driveway there.
Mr. Murray, the question immediately before us is whether or not we should vacate the alley. Are there further comments on the question of whether we should vacate the alley? Do not, then, Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the Commissioners on the ordinance, please, on first reading?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
An ordinance passes on first reading. I know Mr. Paverver always says, I shouldn't say it that way, but I get the idea. Item number three, please.
Item number three is an ordinance authorizing and approving a grant in the amount of $37,500 through the Housing Development and Beautification Grant Program to Case Development LLC, in relation to the property located at 409 West Water Street, declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Communities, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adaption of this ordinance under the suspension of rules and rule quarters of Section 4 of the City Charter.
Second.
That a motion and second. Before we get to a discussion about the legislation, our housing development specialist, Debbie Eversole, is here with us to present some additional information about the proposed legislation.
Thank you, Commissioner President, and also the Commissioner. Tonight, I'm here with Michael DeCesar, on behalf of Case Development LLC, Cleveland, Ohio, to request permission to enter into a grant agreement for housing development and beautification funds in the amount of $37,500. The site at 409 West Water Street is roughly .45 acres, and is bound by Shoreline Drive to the north, Decatur Street to the west, and Water Street to the south. The site was once home to a building called Norman Hall, which is where Frederick Douglass spoke to a crowd in 1864. Norman Hall eventually became the offices for the Hind &amp; Dowg Paper Company, and as the company expanded, it was demolished and replaced with a much larger building that later became known as the Keller Building, which is pictured. The current condition, the Keller Building was demolished in 2015 after years of vacancy and deterioration, leaving it an empty lot ever since. A development LLC, a highly successful residential developer out of Cleveland, Ohio, purchased the vacant land in 2016 to ultimately construct a 13-unit housing development in two to three phases. After receiving approvals from the Planning Department and Planning Commission, along with commitments for two of these five units, the first phase is scheduled to begin in September of 2019. The south elevation, this is the Compliment Project, so the view from Water Street will
The start date for development on the western portion is yet to be determined, so we're looking at half of this. The north elevation, the view from Shoreline Drive, will show three single-family parage houses, which will also be future development, and the start date is yet to be determined. So Phase One development will consist of a five-unit townhouse building on the eastern portion of the site along West Water Street. The total construction budget for the first phase, including utility and site work, is just over one point five million dollars. The building planned for Phase One development includes three stories with access to a rooftop deck. The ground level includes a garage with a bonus room. The second story includes a living area, kitchen, bathroom, and open area off the kitchen, which could be used for entertaining or dining. The third story includes two bedrooms and two additional bathrooms, and the rooftop deck area will be accessed from the third story through a covered stair tower. I'm sorry, it's the second, or the third. The budget, the estimated budget breakdown includes roughly one million forty-three thousand dollars in construction costs, just over three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in site and development work, just over fifty-four thousand dollars in soft cost, just over forty-seven thousand dollars in design and engineering, close to thirty-eight thousand dollars in permitting and licensing, bringing the total submitted budget of just over one point, one million five hundred thousand five hundred dollars. And if approved, the applicant is eligible for thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, which brings the total estimated investment of just over one million four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Since the project is creating five new individually parcel properties, and all are residential in nature, the project is eligible for Housing Development and Beautification Grant funding. According to the Housing Development and Beautification Guidelines and Application, the applicant is eligible for a grant in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars per unit for substantial redevelopment projects that cost in excess of fifty thousand dollars. As such, in this case, the applicant is eligible for a grant of up to thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. And at this time, we would request permission to enter into a grant agreement with Case Development for grant funding in the amount of thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, payable at seven thousand five hundred dollars at a time, with the receipt of certificate of occupancy for the completion of each of the five units. And that concludes my presentation, but if I can't answer any questions, Mr. DeCesar is here.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions or comments regarding the proposed grant? Hearing now, Mrs. Presser, poll the commissioners on the motion, please.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Now, the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to you, Mr. Caesar. Mrs. Presser, would you present item number four, please?
Yes, item four is an ordinance authorizing and approving a grant in the amount of fourteen thousand dollars through the Small Business Assistance and Signage and Facade Grant Programs to the Erie County Visitor and Convention Bureau in relation to the property located at one twenty-five East Water Street, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second. An emotion second. Discussion. Presser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Murray? Sorry, I'm glad Mr. Story has this presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was wondering why. I didn't see there. I apologize. Mrs. President, did some of your meetings and presentations. Thank you. Proceed with your presentation.
So be brief. I'm here on behalf of the Erie County Visitor and Convention Bureau, otherwise known as Lake Erie Shores and Islands. Larry Fletcher and Don Weinhardt, President and Vice President of Operations, respectively, are here to answer your questions. This again is the Bymiller Building, one two five East Water Street, historical picture and then picture of recent times. Mission statement of the organization is to grow the region's tourism economy through collaborative promotion, increasing visitor spending, and making Lake Erie Shores and Islands an ideal place to play, live, and work. Move to this building is intended to provide the organization with prime leasehold space in large downtown within Renaissance Two's mixed-use restoration project. Lake Erie Shores and Islands will be teneting the first and second floor of the building, which will house their administrative offices and services and informational hub for officers, downtown residents, and any other persons walking by. Project description, again, is forty-nine hundred square meters leasehold space on the second floor. Fourteen thousand dollar grant request broken down as follows, ten thousand dollars for the small business grant and four thousand dollars for the signage grant. The ten thousand dollar small business grant will allow for the purchase of two interactive informational kiosks, touchscreen variety, charging tables for up to four phones and tablets. Four thousand dollar signage grant request will allow for the installation of the exterior signage along Water Street, Shoreline Drive on the front and back, multiple window vinyl signs on both entrances as well. There is a picture of what it will hopefully look like. There's your charging station. There's your proposed signage. It is twenty inches by seventeen feet wide. It's placed in an existing recess panel, it's about a PVC board, not PVD PVC board with raised letters and border. Sources and uses fund, this in total is a twenty-five thousand dollar project, as you see on the right-hand side in the sources column. Owner equity here is eleven thousand two hundred five forty-four percent. The signage grant will be for four thousand, approximately sixteen percent, and the small business assistant grant, up to ten thousand dollars, will be approximately forty percent. Project was brought before the Economic Development Incentive Committee on April tenth, twenty eighteen. It was approved at that time for fourteen thousand dollars. However, project was delayed for the last eighteen months or so, sixteen months. Famous storm that hit the Bymiller Building in July of twenty eighteen, and then the back-and-forth city planning landmarks, and the approval of the signage. Project will be completed by year end.
Thank you. Oh, that's good. Commissioners, questions or comments regarding the proposed legislation? Now, Mrs. Presser, please. Poll the commissioners on the motion, please.
Mr. Brady?
Upstate.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Upstate.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now, the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Upstate.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Upstate.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number five, please.
Item five is an ordinance designating parcel number five six dash zero zero nine five four dot zero zero zero, located at six twenty-seven Hancock Street as a blighted parcel, slum, spot slum, as defined in Ohio Revised Code, Section one dot zero eight, for the purposes of blight elimination, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Body?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
An emotion second. Discussion. Good to see a blighted property on Hancock Street, been there for a long time, there to such. We've received a turn of this, Lockhart, I spoke right as you were about to.
No, no, I was gonna, I'm gonna go along with the same thought you have to say, that being able to demolish this property allows them for future growth and expansion in an area where they can maintain their headquarters, where Uter Drug has been for quite some time. I've visited a location, and it's outstanding that a business can stay in one area for over a hundred years. I mean, it's quite awesome. So if this helps them out, I'm really excited to see that. Thank you so much for your participation, I see Mr. Partham. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments, commissioners? Commissioner, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now, the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Presser, would you present item number six, please?
Yes, item number six is an ordinance authorizing and approving a grant in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Uter Drug Company Incorporated in relation to the property located at six two seven Hancock Street, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lloyd?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
An emotion second. Discussion. Glasgow, it's a pretty interesting background to how we got to this point, and how a building was acquired, and the arrangement was, what we were otherwise looking to have to do. Could you give us a little bit of background?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the commission, as mentioned, Partham, the audience, in case there's additional questions, he's here on behalf of Uter Drug, but also more directly, Matt Uter, who is with patients, where he's grew facility this year. So he sends us. But just a little bit of background, last piece of legislation, this piece of legislation, as Commissioner Lockhart mentioned, this is a legacy company that had its roots in Sudusky in the fifteen hundreds. They've been operating out of their current facility since nineteen seventy-three at six thirty-three Hancock, Hancock and Row. As mentioned, they also do have facilities in Yvonne and Perrysburg, but Sudusky serves as their principal headquarters. They've historically leased space out of the property that's being proposed for demolition. Web compositor program has been through that lease. However, the conditions of the property are very severe, it's deteriorated pretty quickly, to the point of a one-eight-five percent deteriorated based on Chief Director's inspection. And as a lease, let's see, in that space, they long desired to acquire the site, to renovate, demolish, not for imminent plans to rebuild, but the option to rebuild in the future for containment headquarters here in Sudusky. In late two thousand and eighteen, they did negotiate, in fact, the purchase of that property, long-time property owner, just under sixty thousand dollars for that purchase. They've also been undertaking six-figure renovation of their existing facility at six thirty-three Hancock as well. But what's being proposed here is the demolition of six twenty-seven Hancock, the former Fisher facility. The total cost of that demolition is two hundred and twelve thousand, which includes asbestos abatement demolition, and ultimately repair to the northern face of six thirty-three Hancock. Candidly, this property was next on our target list for industrial and commercial demolitions. So through this transaction, although we look to contribute a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grant funds on reimbursable basis upon the demolition, we're also able to elect dollars in additional funding that would not have to come out of the city's pockets if we were to demolish it ourselves. And although there's no commitments, demands through this grant agreement that they ultimately build on the site, or we know is going to be a dense urban area, and for them to maintain their headquarters here in Sudusky and potentially expand in the future, this building needs to be demolished. So we're happy, not only will it be as strictly as included in the activity, but what it does do is open the option for expansion in the future, if we're to stay here for decades to come. Again, we would look to provide a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grant funds through this piece of legislation, only to be dispersed when the building is down and the lot is graded and ceded. And just for the audience's sake, the last piece of the legislation denoting it as slum and blight site allows Uter Drug to tap into potentially county, state, and federal resources if necessary. Doesn't mean they will, but at least makes them eligible to do so if they so desire. That's what's being proposed for every, it's right.
Thank you, Mr. Glasgow. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brady?
Mr. Glasgow, then I think we can accurately receive this as if the city just got a sixty-two thousand dollar discount on what would have been an entire burden on our city's part. And on top of that, we got rid of the blight. Good deal for us. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments, commissioners? Presser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number seven, please.
Item seven is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase thirty-six Dell workstations with peripherals, one laptop, and one projector from Dell Marketing LP of Round Rock, Texas, through the State of Ohio Department of Administrative Services Cooperative Purchasing Program to be used by various departments, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now, the ordinance, please.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. And, Mr. Chairman, so I just want to thank you and others you've worked with in the IT department for making sure that we stay on track and that we regularly swap out the old equipment, so that we don't have an unexpected bill that comes along from having not, don't listen long period of time, and we keep, we retain the ability to provide the services that our residents will come. Thank you for that. Presser, would you present item number eight, please?
Yes, item eight is the first reading of an ordinance adopting the bylaws to NeoRide Regional Council of Governments and approving membership into NeoRide as Ohio Council of Governments and Ohio.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the first reading.
Second.
An emotion second. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Cool.
Just, this is, I support this. Someone here to talk about what this NeoRide is, so public understands what we're doing.
Mr. Partham's back there, and I see him rapidly moving to the microphone, so, Partham, maybe you can answer Mr. Fisher's question.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I agree, Mr. President, to Commissioner, and the rest of the commission. I've been helping our transit administrator, Michael Freitas, with this project as a way to increase coordination with other transit agencies in Northern Ohio. NeoRide was founded in twenty fourteen by the transit agencies in Akron, Portage County, and Stark County, as a way to kind of increase coordination between the two, do joint funding, grant writing, fuel procurement. Since that time, they've expanded to ten members, including one in Kentucky, including Cincinnati, and I've heard Cleveland RTA is on the verge of joining as well. In addition to those other benefits I mentioned, the latest thing NeoRide has been involved with is the creation of a mobile ticketing app through a vendor called Masabi. What that does is it allows people to purchase transit tickets on a mobile application the same way you would purchase an Uber or Lyft on the same application across multiple different cities. And so by joining NeoRide through this resolution, the commission, then we can enter into conversation with NeoRide and Masabi to become part of these fare app, to make it easier for Sudusky residents to purchase fares to ride the West, but also people visiting Sudusky from other cities that would be able to use the same application. And so I think at their next meeting, we're expecting three or four other cities to join the organization in addition to Sudusky. We have an answer to this.
Just thank you to you and Mr. Freitas for continuing to come up with new and better ways to improve, make our system more effective. Glad to see you joining us, or we, I should say.
If you, if some questions or comments, commissioners? Presser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now, the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number nine, please.
Item number nine is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed wastewater treatment plant ferris chloride system rehabilitation project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
An emotion second discussion. Mr. Klein, I take it, this is not the work that we're reviewing policies, critical performance of the equipment and safety of our staff, this is part of, this is part of contract. Additional questions or comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Great.
Mr. Klein, this is, I believe this is one of those items that we are sharing the cost with the county on, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments, Commissioners? Commissioner, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Now on the resolutions.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Now on the resolutions.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number 10, please.
Item number 10 is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed Cedar Point Chaussee Water Tower Demolition Project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I don't, I don't know how we can handle this on the agenda when, when the other item is still on the table. Is that right?
I think you could answer it.
This is actually a little different than the last one, and that's why it's standing on. The price is different than the last one. It's the same issue, but this is a different ordinance, and that the price is different. I would assume if we passed this today, that would make it when that was tabled in the point, and we'd discuss when it comes to old business. But this is a different ordinance than the last, because that was tabled.
I'm not sure that we could, maybe you could clarify how we could talk about this one if the other one was tabled as to the disposition of the tower.
Obviously, it was different with the previous legislation. Okay, actually, today, the tower is supplied, it's not the different, it's a place.
Mr. Chairman, I understand what you've done, and I, I'm troubled by the fact that we go out of our way to just circumvent the process. We pass a piece of, I should say, we present a piece of legislation, and decide, and table it for whatever reason you did, and it's not specifically about this, but any piece of legislation, and you change the price on it, and then bring it back as completely new legislation. Might be technically legal, but it gives me pause. I don't think we should operate that way. It would've been just as simple to bring the other off the table, deal with it, and bring another clean piece of legislation. It just doesn't, it doesn't make me comfortable on how we came about this, because the piece of legislation that's on the table is essentially this, for less money. And for you to bring this back without any conversation, because the last piece of legislation, the piece that's on the table, has attached to it that the staff is supposed to bring back and report to us whether or not it should even be torn down. So for you to jump over that by simply changing the price and saying it's brand-new, that just troubles me. May very well be legal, but that's just a maneuver. I consider it a maneuver, an unnecessary maneuver for something that, a tower that we're ultimately going to take down anyway.
Well, Mr. Klein, I agree with that interpretation, city, but my thoughts, details, why it is that this is legislation, and the legislation in play, the motion, second, talk on it further. Someone care to make a motion to adopt the legislation?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
An emotion second discussion. Klein, maybe you can start out by addressing the question, which is how this legislation is different, why it is, but it certainly take up the legislation that was taken.
Sir, Mr. President, this is the water tower that's on the Chaussee that everybody's familiar with. It was decommissioned in 2012, it was actually put out of service in 2012, but officially decommissioned in 2016. And we got approval from EPA to no longer have it as part of our water distribution system. When we came in 2018 with the original request for demolition, to go out to bid for demolition, we had a price from a contractor that was looking to do the work, and it was well exceeded the $10,000, so we wanted to go out to bid to do that work. Since that time, prices have gone up, those types of things happen, and the cost for disposal of the steel has gone up as well. And we don't think that we'll be able to award the project within that original budget. In addition to that, since that time, I talked to a couple consultants, and they've recommended that we add lead-based paint and asbestos as included in the demolition spec. So it is slightly different from the previous one, because we had to add those. That's also another reason why the cost potentially went up, is we're putting that on the contractor to make sure that they're doing the analysis and disposing of materials properly, and using the appropriate techniques for the demolition to not cause the lead-based paint, if there isn't lead-based paint to optimize it. So it is slightly different, essentially it's a demolition, but we have added a couple components, and we needed to increase the estimate for that to make sure that we could award it. To that point, it is the State of Ohio, Ohio Revised Code, that you can't award anything exceeds 10% of the engineer's estimate. So we did go through with the original legislation, and then we let the project demand, it's likely come back to, we do it, to award it, to go back and bid a second time. So this was to, to use staff time as well by bidding with all time.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional questions or comments, Commissioners? If not, Mrs. Crusher, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Now on the resolution.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Now on the resolution.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number 12, please.
Yes, item number 12 is a resolution authorizing the submission of an application by the city manager for financial assistance and to enter into a project agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission in order to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs authorized by Chapter 164, aid to local government improvements of the Ohio Revised Code for the Camp Street Resurfacing and Reconstruction Project, and declaring that this resolution take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
An emotion second discussion. Klein, maybe you can start out by addressing the question, which is how this legislation is different, why it is, but it certainly take up the legislation that was taken.
Sir, Mr. President, this is simply for applying for funding through the Ohio Public Works Commission to reconstruct Camp Street. That would be from Monroe to Washington, awarded. Right now, this project is not included in the capital plan for 2020, but with Ohio Public Works, what they typically like to see is some of these arterials, these main routes throughout the city, the collectors and those types of roads that have a high volume of traffic. They like to see those being sent to them to get some funding. So what we've done in the past is we've looked for projects that were, that we could split about 50/50, request $175,000 to maximize the points. If we do maximize our points and are fortunate enough to get funding, funding would not be available until July of next year, obviously. We will find out later this year if we would get awarded, and then we would update the capital plan to show that we're going to do it. So this was a project that we applied for through the MPO to get State of Ohio funding through the federal government, and not get awarded on that one. So going back at it, we'll have Public Works Commission to see if they'll get it to us.
Mr. Klein, Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Cool.
I just want to commend the engineer and his staff. They put a great deal of effort, it's obvious, in identifying streets that can be done, that need to be done, and work extra hard to get the funding needed from outside sources. You've done a very good job with that, and appreciate the efforts, because I realize these projects are complicated, and it requires a great deal of stubby pencil work to figure out how to make it work, and it should be noted that you do a good job at that. Thank you for the effort.
Additional questions or comments? Commissioner, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Now on the resolution.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Now on the resolution.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number 13, please.
Item number 13 is a resolution authorizing the submission of an application by the city manager for financial assistance and to enter into a project agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission in order to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs authorized by Chapter 164, aid to local government improvements of the Ohio Revised Code for the Citywide Resurfacing Project, and declaring that this resolution take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
An emotion second discussion. Klein, again, could you give us a little bit of additional background on the scope of this project, and how this is hurrowing into the neighborhoods, dealing with some of the streets?
Sir, Mr. President, first, I'd like to hand out a map that coincides with the list of streets. Contrary to what I stated at the last application, Ohio Public Works typically likes to see those main collectors and arterials, we'd send to them for award for funding. We're doing something a little bit different that we haven't tried in the past here. What we did is we took 46 of street segments throughout the entire city. These are the ones that we did the 2015 pavement condition analysis. These were the bottom 46 on that list. So what I wanted to do with this map was highlight the areas to show that there is a decent distribution throughout the city, but it's actually the 46 worst segments, so we are focusing on that. We're very hopeful that they're lenient to us and that they'll actually provide us with the funding. But what we did is we looked at the funding splits, the award points, $350,000, we did the maximum amount of bottom points, a 50/50 split, so we're requesting $75,000. So we're doing everything we can possibly do to maximize our points, and we're trying our hardest to make sure that we can get those 46 worst segments taken care of. If it works this year, you can guarantee that you'll see another one of these next year and the year after.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional questions or comments, Commissioners? Commissioner, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Now on the resolution.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Item number 14, please.
Declaring a 1966-inch Coleman truck pump, model number 16A2, as unnecessary and unfit for city use pursuant to Section 25 of the City Charter, authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase a Magwin CD-150S critically silenced 6-inch drug pump, trailer, and accessories from Xylem Dewatering Solutions Incorporated of Haynesville, Ohio, through the State of Ohio Department of Administrative Services Cooperative Purchasing Program for the Sewer Maintenance Division, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
If we do maximize our points and are fortunate enough to get funding, funding would not be available until July next year, obviously. We will find out later this year if we would get awarded, and then we would update the capital plan to show that we're going to get funding. So this was a project that we applied for through the MPO to get State of Ohio funding through the federal government and not get awarded on that one. So going back at it, we'll have Ohio Public Works Commission to see if they'll get it to us.
Mr. Klein. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Klein.
I just want to commend the engineer and his staff. They put a great deal of effort, it's obvious, in identifying streets that can be done and that need to be done and work extra hard to get the funding needed from outside sources. You've done a very good job with that and appreciate the efforts on it because I realize these projects are complicated and it requires a great deal of stubby pencil work to figure out how to make it work and it should be noted that you do a good job at that. Thank you for the effort.
Additional questions or comments? Commissioner Rich, hold it. Commissioners on the motion.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
On the resolution.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
On the resolution.
Item number 13 is a resolution authorizing the submission of an application by the city manager for financial assistance and to enter into a project agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission in order to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs authorized by Chapter 164 Aid to Local Government Improvements of the Ohio Revised Code for the Citywide Resurfacing Project and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
An emotion second discussion. Mr. Klein, again, could you give us a little bit of additional background on the scope of this project and how this is hurrowing into the neighborhoods dealing with some of the streets.
Sir, Mr. President, first, I'd like to hand out a map that coincides with the list of streets. So contrary to what I stated at the last application, Ohio Public Works typically likes to see those main collectors and arterials sent to them for award for funding. We're doing something a little bit different that we haven't tried in the past here. What we did is we took 46 of street segments throughout the entire city. These are the ones that we did the 2015 pavement condition analysis. These were the bottom 46 on that list. So what I wanted to do with this map was highlight the areas to show that there is a decent distribution throughout the city, but it's actually the 46 worst segments, so we are focusing on that. We're very hopeful that they're lenient to us and that they'll actually provide us with funding, but what we did is we looked at the funding splits, the award points, $350,000 to get the maximum amount of points, a 50/50 split, so we're requesting a $75,000. So we're doing everything we can possibly do to maximize our points and we're trying our hardest to make sure that we can get those 46 worst segments taken care of. If it works this year, you can guarantee that you'll see another one of these next year and the year after.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional questions or comments, Commissioners? Commissioner Rich, hold it. Commissioners on the motion, please.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
On the resolution.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
On the resolution.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
On the ordinance.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
On the ordinance.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Wadding.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
On the ordinance.
Yes, item 15 is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to approve the first and final change order for work performed by Smith Paving and Excavating Incorporated of Norwalk, Ohio for the 2019 sidewalk repair and replacement project in the amount of $8,783.46 and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
An emotion second discussion. There was a question posed during public comments, Mr. Klein, about whether additional work is anticipated in Washington Park or whether it will finish on time. Do you have a ready answer to that question?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The plan right now is to proceed through the fireworks on an annual basis and try to get the work done in a five to six year time period and see if we can push that up on the number of presidential complaints that we have and try to balance both of those things. Washington Park is 100% the city's responsibility, so we want to make sure that too.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional questions or comments, Commissioners? Mr. Cross, you can pull the Commissioners on the motion, please.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
On the ordinance.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
On the ordinance.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
On the ordinance.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
On the ordinance.
Yes.
Return the meeting over now, Mr. Hooper, to you for the end of the.
Thank you, Commission President, Commissioners, audience, staff. I will start this evening's main report with donations. First, a donation of $50 to the Mills Creek Golf Course received from the Salloway family in memory of William Emmett Stahl, and ask for a motion to accept that donation.
Second.
An emotion second discussion. Not objection, motion be approved. Hearing no objection, motion is approved.
Also, a donation of $50 to the Police Department Trust Fund was received from the Salloway family in memory of Joan Sickman. I'd also ask for a motion to accept that donation.
Second.
An emotion second discussion. Not objection, motion be approved. Hearing no objection, motion is approved. My thanks to the Salloway.
Also, a donation of $100 was received from Dave Waddington to go towards the maintenance of or planting for the area in Washington Park where the Boston Garden, their junior, their King Junior is located. The donation is in honor of Tony Morrison, and Commissioner Waddington, I don't know if you want to say a few words. He called me about his interest in making that donation tonight, and I thought it was a touching story, so I don't know if you want to share that with the audience tonight at all.
Yeah, I entirely forgot about it. I get the Wall Street Journal, Ann Rutter, where she had passed. She's from Lorraine, Ohio, Lorraine, senior Lorraine High School graduate, but went on to be a very successful writer, and in either 1970 or '71, a book, The Bluest Eye, was given to me, and I was told to read it, and I read it, and it has, it's her way, she was a minority woman writer, it was her way to escape the world and get, in her mind, the blue eyes that she always desired to achieve what white ideas were at that time, and very accomplished writer. Bringing her back to you.
So I asked for a motion to accept that donation as well.
Second.
An emotion second discussion. Not objection, motion be approved. Hearing no objection, motion is approved. My thanks to Commissioner Murray.
Wonderful. Moving on to new business. We'd like to welcome Hannah Nadelas as the new administrative business director. Hannah is a graduate of Willard High School and a recent graduate of the University of Mississippi School of Law, and will be working in the Civil Division primarily, but will also assist in the Criminal Division. I'm trying to get that introduced, Hannah. Hannah, you want to stand up?
No. So as I said, Hannah's got to be helping with the Civil and Criminal Division. She just took the fire, so hopefully she passed and will hit the world ground with her.
Thank you. Good luck.
Continuing with some HR changes, Mason Die has been given a conditional offer for a full-time position in the Police Department, replacing recently retired Sergeant Ron Snyder. Once testing is finalized, he'll be sworn in at the August 26th meeting. Also, the Police Department officers participated in many community events over the past several weeks, such as Touch a Truck, Walk a Mile, the Back to School Rally, cooking lunch for Churchill Park Program, and other activities and other events. We thank them for that. Moving on to the Fire Department, they'd like to congratulate Tim Scheffler on his retirement effective August 2nd. Tim has 20 years of service and served citizens as well. Also, during some of the very hot days of the fighter, led by firefighter Jeff Danovich, set up hop-up water parks throughout the city parks, and I've happened to go by some of those, and they were very busy, and so we're very thankful for that relief provided by the department. Moving on to finance, the city successfully sold its 4.7 million temporary urban renewal bonds on August 1st, 2019, to BB&amp;T from Charlotte, North Carolina. The net interest cost was 2.37%, and the bonds will mature on August 1st of next year for Public Works to enhance pedestrian safety, traffic pattern at the intersection of Hancock and Market Streets, and transportation. Bless you. Do a four-way stop tomorrow, Tuesday, August 16th. Signs have been posted to alert motorists of the reconfiguration. Also, in-house resurfacing updates, Sherman Street between Pearson and Perkins is complete. Followed street between Columbus and Wayne is scheduled for three weeks, starting on the 12th of this month. Also, as a follow-up to the application for infrastructure damage assistance funding, city staff, not officials from Erie County, EMA, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers out of Oak Harbor in Buffalo, New York review sites of late flooding around the city in hopes of securing some relief for the costs incurred. For community development, an update on Mysteria, demolition work has been completed at the site. Final grading and seeding has also occurred. The city will retain 10% of the contract amount, or $9,000, to ensure substantial growth of the freshly planted seed. The city wishes to make Garza dirt work through their weakness of the foundation of the work. Responsible of the questions from neighbors is the work is underway. Moving on to the Planning Department, third walkway hike in Cackavent is scheduled for August 14th. The walk area includes Wayne and Hancock Streets between and including Monroe and Scott Streets, both the Sandusky City Schools, and First Baptist Church, among others, are participating along with several funders. A regular planning commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, August 28th at 4:30 p.m. in the Commission Chambers. Regular Board of Zoning Appeals meeting is scheduled for Thursday, August 22nd at 4:30 p.m. in the Commission Chambers. And then finally, the Regular Arts and Culture Commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, August 14th at 5:00 p.m. in the Commission Chambers. For the Recreation Department, work has begun here on Park to install the playground equipment that was purchased at the end of 2018 with Commission approval for a play and park structure. City workers are clearing the area next to the splash pad and will begin setting footers and installing the equipment in the next several weeks. Following installation, concrete will be poured around the new play space, and then a shelter will be constructed, board and play, or in place type surface will be installed. Project should wrap up by early fall. This project is funded through Recreation Capital Funds, Mylaner Grant Funds, and a grant from Erie Metro Parks. This will be the eighth neighborhood park rehabbed by the City of Sandusky since the passage issue of 2004. That concludes our remarks for the session.
Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman. At our Central Park cleanup this past Saturday, we had eight volunteers, and I want to give a shout out to two of the kids from Hancock School, Jackson and Tyson showed up, loved a couple hours, because we've not only the park, but like, put on a couple different streets around, but we have to be able to get six or something.
So items of whole business.
I'm sorry.
I just could, just to follow up, we need to discuss more, have you ever asked the local, all of the, all of that, right? It's not on to these, it hasn't been discussed.
Discuss that.
Oh, is there a discussion on that?
On the, uh, don't we need to either make some type of formal, taking it from the table, disposing of it?
I don't understand.
Mr. Chairman.
I don't have a function for it either, but I think it does make a point at this point, when we address it a different way. Only thing you would be doing would be pulling it off the table to go to Dap Bell, which I think is issuing utilities, remove it.
Well, someone wants to do that.
Well, I, I'm only saying that just so that things are a little bit clean and clear for the future. Look back on something that was tabled, and then we simply just did nothing with it. You know, you'd look back five years from now and wonder why there's two pieces of legislation, and then there's nothing done with the one that was laid on the table. Because I believe in the, yeah.
But that's probably the medicine of the person.
Mr. Chairman, just.
Mr. Sonnison.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, just gonna tell you, it's like, it doesn't change the outcome, but just, you know, I'm gonna meet with you later to follow that train. I, I just don't like to take shortcuts on policy when you're doing public, public work, and you may be absolutely right, I'm not certain, and just so you know, I'll just follow up on it and won't belabor it tonight.
Thank you. I just wanted to address our last meeting. It's not to spark debate, and it's more about kind of sharing some thoughts and hopes to trying to bring our community back together, but, Mr. Chairman, I wanted you to know that I appreciate what you were trying to accomplish at the end of the last meeting. I feel that Ask the City email is a great opportunity for our residents to stay informed. Knowing that we all lead busy lives and can't manage to be here to ask those important questions, I think it's important to give our residents the opportunity to ask anything at any time. This allows us to be more transparent and informative with our community. The more our community knows, the better we can work together. For example, streets have been a hot topic, so Director Klein, thank you so much for having those items on the agenda tonight. Understanding our finances and understanding that dollars can only be spent in certain areas, I want to know when all the streets are going to be newly paved. Looking back 10 years ago to now, we have a lot of catching up to do. Same with our trees, same with the sidewalks, which I brought it before, it's a property owner's responsibility. It's nice to have city assistance, but it shouldn't be expected. As for the behavior that we've had in this room as of late, I have to say I'm really disappointed. I've worked for Corporate America for 24 years, and one of Walmart's mottos is respect for the individual, and unfortunately, recently, I haven't seen respect for the individual in this room. We're all adults. I would hope that we were all taught better and to treat people better. It's plain and simple for our audience participation that's coming up tonight. It's not the time to receive answers to questions. There's a respectful way to ask a question and a respectful way to make a public comment. There's enough hate in the world, it would be nice to not bring that into this room and so we can work together to get to a better place. I think I speak for every single person in this room that we all want a better Sandusky. Everyone sitting at these tables has been working tirelessly to give you a better Sandusky. Please respect that we're all human. We do make mistakes, but our best intentions for our entire community is close to all of our hearts. For the Commissioners sitting with me at this table, please respect the quorum that Chairman Murray was trying to establish. Our Directors and City Manager are human and trying to bring a better Sandusky to your constituents. I would ask everyone to please respect the hard work that they do and treat them as you would like to be treated. If Sandusky is going to be successful long-term, we have to stop dividing this community and work together. Understand, if you don't like the direction this commission is going, maybe run for office. We have an election coming up. I encourage everyone, get to know your candidates, including their history. Vote those that will lead Sandusky in the direction that you want, what do you want to see? Vote for those that you would be proud to talk to your children about. The youth is our future, and we need to make sure that we're setting a good example for them. They are watching. I'm asking everyone in this room and at home to lead by example. If we are going to be a better Sandusky, we all need to teach our children how to do so as well. With that being said, please keep sharing your ideas, bring them to us, bring them to the city manager, bring them to our directors. Keep asking questions, keep making your suggestions. It's the only way we're going to grow together. We're here because of you, the citizens of Sandusky who voted for us. We're here to work with you, and it's going to take all of us to make Sandusky a better place. Thank you.
Additional items of whole business? And any items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mark.
I mean, this is a question that keeps coming up over and over again, and maybe we've addressed it, but just maybe, Mr. Klein could just tell everybody what the orange hoses are down on Shoreline Drive. Kind of heard it so many times, everybody's asking, so maybe he could just put it out there and everybody can kind of be comfortable as to what they are.
Mr. Klein, could you address the question?
Mr. President, for you to, Commissioner Lockhart, the orange lines out there are the de-watering system for the trenches. Contractor hired a company out of Indiana to come and install those to make sure that they can get the pipe in a dry area, do the proper compaction, get the backfill in and get everything exactly where it needs to be compacted properly so that it lasts as long as it's intended to last. And we say to add on to that, there's also a de-watering contractor that's doing the same thing on the Texas Street, appear to do that work. It's not uncommon. So they all had it intended to do that.
Additional items of new business? And we turn to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the question? Please step to the microphone, put your name and address to share with us your thoughts relative to the City of Sandusky.
Good evening, Commissioners, City officials, guests. My name is Mike Landry. The address is 131 42nd Street. I've been a lifelong resident of the City of Sandusky and am present, remember, who's in cart? We just completed our 14th year of Friday Night Charity Car Shows on Columbus Avenue in downtown Sandusky. Our club puts on these shows as a way to get back to the community which we live. Part of our mission is to. Last year, our six car shows raised a total of $6,000. Organizations and charities receiving $1,000 each, serving our seniors, City Skateboard Park, Ironman Shoe Fund, Sandusky Police K-9 Unit, Act to the Wild, and the Alex Tetschoff Memorial Scholarship Fund. We look to donate a comparable amount again this year to these organizations. Since our shows started back in 2006, the car club and sponsors have raised $60,000 for local charities and organizations. Our car shows, like other downtown events, bring people downtown and support downtown businesses. Each year, our car shows draw new visitors, along with visitors who continue to enjoy and support our downtown area and businesses, not just at our car shows, but also throughout the. We met with the city back in March, and were told we were being off of Columbus Avenue in 2020, and given a list of eight options. The options offered couldn't accommodate due to a combination of factors, including parking limitations, poor location, timing, and lack of amenities. We understand there are a lot of pros and cons on this issue, and we feel there are a lot more pros than cons. We ask you to review the options, work with us to resolve any downtown business issues, and help us preserve our historic Friday Night Charity Car Shows in its current venue next year and beyond. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for your contributions. And what else wish you to ask the Commissioner?
Back in May of 2018, the Commissioners passed to skim off 10% of the bed tax. That 10% amounts to $140,000 a year. This will go towards the marketing and programming of downtown. However, the city manager did not explain at that time how this was going to be implemented and what it was going to be involved. 23 business people and staff decide on how to spend this $140,000 a year. Well, the city created a business district marketing manager. Salary is $55,993 a year. The salary is not included to $140,000. That salary comes out of the city manager's budget, which is the general fund. So overall, we have $200,000 a year coming out of general fund for this program. The purpose of the position is to create and implement the strategy for the management of the programming of the business district, to coordinate with business district stakeholders and merchant, improve the business climate downtown. The position answers to the city manager and business district advisory council, which is the key stat, city staff, downtown stakeholders, and Main Street Board and regional partners. My concern is this. Main Street is supposed to be taking care of this, not the taxpayer. We just bought ourselves into a director of Main Street and gave a budget for downtown expenses on this, promoting downtown. Main Street needs to be self-supporting and get themselves their own director and their own budget, raise their dues. It's. It's driving downtown. They can manage this. But instead, we have to pick up that tab. The group was formed without an agenda, minutes, open meetings. What happened here was there's other meeting, what I'm bothered by this open meetings thing is that it's not just staff members that are mattering. There's 23 business owners gathering to spend this money. What I want to know now is, is there going to be a budget? Somebody told me there might be a budget coming forth for the commissioners to approve. Otherwise, we don't know where this money's going. $140,000 a year. I want to know if there's going to be a budget approved by this commission. Nothing but crickets, silence. You guys, there's something else. Your piece of work.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone else present wishing to address the commission?
Greetings, everyone. Tom LaMaca, 206 48th Street. My concerns are pretty much the same as far as Jackson Street Pier and Shoreline Drive de-watering process. I'm concerned about the pollutants that, first of all, they were pulling it on the pier, letting those pollutants that flow through the dock, stone bases there. So we're eventually going to have more pollutants in the water than we had in the past because at least they were sitting still in a more solid state. I think that means that dock and Shoreline Drive. I think that we've, well, some of us have seen the water coming out more of a serpents message or throwing out of the dock and then it gets a rush of clean water and makes it penetrate a little more. Some of it did escape initially directly into the bay, and I don't know that that's being properly monitored. And I hope that maybe if we as a local group can better keep an eye on that, that maybe we need to get the feds in here and take a better look at the project hazards moving along. We recently had the biohazards group in here asking for money to help them fight the alga growth, and this is just one more step of that food chain, of ecosystem. Our EMS, fire, and police departments are understaffed, overworked. I thought Issue 8 was supposed to address that and add more firemen, policemen, and EMS personnel. Those vehicles, EMS vehicles, they've got to have tons of miles on them. And those folks that are going out there to take care of the patients, I mean, they're simply overworked. We need more people to help them and help the police department as well. With the additional people coming into downtown as it continues to grow and boom, we're going to have more needs for those personnel as well. So please take a look at a way to address those issues. Third, I think that the city commission is also overworked. I think that you're underpaid. I think that we need to adjust our pay scale for the city commissioners so that we can get people coming in to step in and take the beating that you do. Your job is to start just coming in here at 5 o'clock to run a meeting. I understand that. And you're probably putting in 30 hours or more, perhaps not, preparing for your meetings. Just investigating what's going to be on the agenda, what the gripes are going to be within the city, getting your mind together and your mindset together for that. So I think that we should look at finding a way to pay future city commissioners a salary comparable to what at least the Perkins Township trustees get, which is about $20,000 a year. And theirs is a part-time job as well, allegedly, along with health benefits in line with what the current employees get. A lot of people won't like those statements I just made there along that line, but you're underpaid, overworked, and I appreciate what you do, even though we beat on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaMaca.
Thank you. Attention, 362 Sheffield Way. It's obvious that we're sticking with Mr. Murray's idea that one lasts without being, that we're not going to answer any questions here. My only suggestion would be that, is that if you're not going to answer the questions here, maybe if I'm going to ask a question tonight, maybe tomorrow or in a couple of days, a proper staff member could answer the questions for myself or anybody from the public. That'd be one suggestion. The other suggestion would be that when we hand out these grants that we get tonight, that the definition of reimbursable better defined in the legislation is not quite understood, maybe from anybody that's watching or anybody that pays attention to the agenda or if they're listening, that it's not understood if we are reimbursing or if the applicant is reimbursing. There's a very simple way to fix that problem. The other question I have is maybe the fire chief could email me tomorrow is whether or not the firefighter that was hired tonight is actually for a new position or if it's a replacement. It's announced tonight that we have a new firefighter, but it's not understood if it's a new position or a replacement. And also, maybe city manager could email me tomorrow or the recreation director of what is going to happen with the older play equipment in the other section of your park. Because I understand, based on my drive by today, that the new equipment is actually going over by the splash. And what is going to happen with the old equipment? Is that going to be taken out, repaired? It is in pretty bad condition. Make room.
Mr. Chairman, just before we move on, to regard to the car club and what they brought forward, we just add to that that we have received a letter from three businesses downtown that fully and totally support the, not only the car club show, the car show, but also whatever additional events that we bring downtown. So there is support downtown from this from several businesses. Additionally, I just would like to know going forward, what, how, we have until January before the 2020 certificates of use go out. So we have between now and then to resolve this. Just what do we go next to get this resolved? That's what's important, that we find out exactly. We did ask what the concerns were downtown that may make it, the suggestion came to move them another place, and I'm still waiting for that information. Hopefully, it'll get sent to me sooner or later. More to be sure that, because their event is really no different than any other event in terms of taking up space. There may be a different size, but we need to be sure that all events are treated equally and we have some kind of template that at least justifies what action we're taking with any particular event that's down there in terms of telling them, yes, they may, no, they may not use facilities because streets belong to the entire community.
Anyone else present wishing to address the commission?
I spoke with Mr. Murray after the press conference about the lovely hole in the ground that we have next to the parking garage, Market Street. And I did get a response back from Mr. Shenago, who said, wow, that's really a deal. Was there? Yeah, it was in, I don't know that it was an error. They must have always planned for airflow through the lower levels of the parking garage. Maybe to work with the planning commissioner, somebody that egress windows, fans, something could be used there. But I think for, you know, 30 years, we've had a hole there. And like I said, I think it's also a safety issue for the city. If I was 10, I would have climbed up and down that, into that pit. And I just think it's right in the very center of our city, and it's really just an ugly hole. We need to make a decision. Something there, or we need to push the camera to work. The city's coming along. Things are looking so much better. And you don't walk by it and just say, what's that hole for? I think we can work on that. It's a safety issue plus serpency.
Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Good evening. My name is Jackie Powell, 1118 Sycamore Line. I am the treasurer of Remember Cruising Car Club, and I don't, I don't want to repeat what Mike had said. I just want to say, one, that we are nonprofit and that every money, any money that we do receive goes back to the community, to the, to our local charities. And like Mike said, one of them is the fire department's shoe fund, the K-9 unit, the skate park, serving our seniors. And just that the more money that we raise, the more money we give back to charities. And I just want to ask, please, keep us on Friday nights and keep us on Columbus Avenue. Thank you.
Mr. Carter, you might as well get up here. You've got up and down, or off the church. Let's see if you're over here.
Heather Carter, 5309 Columbus Avenue. I drove around two Saturdays ago and found the marina was full, including cars parked along all the curves. And again, no trash cans where the public is parking, and the parking lot was full of trash on Saturday morning, or Sunday morning and Sunday afternoon because it didn't get picked up. The parking lot across the street was full. Jackson Street had three spaces empty, and the lot had about two dozen spaces empty with vehicles pulling in few of them. These people were heading to the ferries. Some were trying to get to the ferries through the construction on Jackson Street Pier. The lot behind Daley's was almost full, but the parking garage had 134 empty spaces in the middle of the day on Saturday. Now, the stakeholders are complaining about customers' need to park closer to their businesses. Did Mr. Webster explain to them that their customers are supposed to park in the lots on Water, Wayne, Jackson Block? Because of your poor signage and lousy placement, the signs did not direct ferry customers to the garage as promised. Maybe Mr. Webster should stand on Shoreline and hand out flyers to direct people to the conveniently located parking garage with a short walk to the ferries. There has never been a problem with blocking Columbus or Washington Park for the short periods of time there is an event in town, including the car show and the art walk. The longest the streets are blocked off is during Ohio Bike Week. These excuses are all made up, so it won't be a big surprise when all these activities are moved to Jackson Street Pier. Rumor around town last year was the car show people were told they would be moved to Jackson Street Pier or Shoreline Drive on 2020. The farmer's market people were told they would be on the pier in 2020. Touch a Truck was finally a battery park this year. Lots of room, lots of parking, easy in, easy out. Lots of great comments about it. It makes so much sense, but it was already mentioned last year about moving Touch a Truck to the pier next year. Yes, we want to see people coming to town for the restaurants, interesting shopping, and to ride the ferries. But proper signage, if placed correctly, will move traffic one block east or west, north or south, to get vehicles around blocked streets to downtown parking and businesses. The public may be surprised at what will be forced onto the pier from other places they are now or new events that would be better in other places in this city for many reasons. Blocking off Columbus or Washington Park is not the problem you are trying to create. This is part of the overall plan. The city has to create an excuse to move all these events to the eight-plus-million-dollar goose farm, which has a 30-year mortgage on it, to make it a party central. Keep the people in town to spend their money here instead of putting in bay. These events would make money anywhere in the city. How convenient that this plan puts all of these businesses and all their participants in the area of two commissioners' businesses who will directly financially benefit from this. When Bucyrus has their Bratwurst Festival, they block off the whole city, except for local and festival parking. Everyone else is directed completely around the whole area, main highways and all. Works for them, plus a speed trap. Here, we're talking one street, two blocks. Take heed, Mr. Webster, that's your new tagline. If your plan was working so well, Jackson Street Parking would have been filled full of your stakeholders' customers, not the people running the ferries, who have been saying for three years, we can always walk a block or two. Weren't your stakeholders listening? On another topic, I asked this at a previous meeting, I think at the end of last year. I asked, why can't public questions now be answered at the next meeting under old news? People come here to ask you directly so you can understand the passion they have for the problems they're trying to face and get corrected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Anyone else present wishing to address the commission? If not, then, oh, please go ahead here.
Percy Paul, Marley Thompson, 1902 Adrian Circle. We still can't hear. You're going back to your old habits, leaning back in the chair. We can't hear these people. My husband has brand-new hearing aids. They're cracked up. Lean over a second. Hear them? No. Mr. Webster, something about your voice, the tone. We can't hear you, and it sounds garbled, and that's not fair. No. No. But we are spending money on your computers, this new equipment. The new equipment that we have should work. There's a volume on it, and there's not. Get it closer to you. We're here to listen, not just to be right. I wanted to know about the $150,000 to boot or drug. Coming from the EMS fund? You can't ask the question, but somewhere we need to, Andy, can you do that? For me, because I want to go after these answers later if I don't get a response from someone. Because if that's coming from our EMS fund, I just heard that we need new equipment, that our equipment's getting old. Why are we borrowing from one and not taking care of our own? And what do we, I can ask the question, how much does it cost? Because, thank you, God, I've never ridden in an ambulance. How much does it cost for an ambulance to come pick me up? And I have to pay the city, right? Another question. Can we help the citizens instead of giving money to businesses that, you know, in the old days, people built their own businesses? I think some of you know that and did a good job. But we're giving out money to these businesses. Yes, we want them to stay, but is it? We don't give them that money. Are they still going to expand? By the way, last meeting, we gave money to Laura's Printing. I commend them. Joe's a good friend of mine. Debbie is too. I see a sign down on Hancock Street that says Laura's Printing. Now, specifically in the agenda, it said the money that was given to Laura's Printing was going to Cleveland Road Facility. It's not right. Doesn't make sense, but I won't ask a question about that one. There was a Register article about Perkins Avenue is going to be repaved, but only the Perkins sign. And there was more on this article in the Register. And there was more on this article in the Register. Only that side, the Perkins side, is going to be, they got funding, they got a grant. And I think Sandusky was asked, I'm not asking about it. Sandusky was asked to join into that to save money, and Lee had said, they said, no, because they later on, they're going to tear up the sidewalks and other things, and it wouldn't be a good idea. We give all these grants, why aren't we looking for some? Why didn't we know this was available? Why didn't we go after it? Why, instead of saying, well, we're going to do that another year? I can't wait to look at that map. One minute. I won't argue this time. There's so much that needs to be talked about with the people, giving the people, giving them a chance to go down. And if you don't, you do everything, Section 14, or it's foolish. And people come down here, they just want to talk, and they hear, oh, we're going to file this under, we're going to pass this under this emergency, it used to be emergency. And we still don't have a meeting with the Jackson Street Pier people. I'm waiting. You just don't. And Mr. Brady, sir. But please, just a meeting, give us a meeting about this Jackson Street Pier, the aspect.
Anyone else present wishing to address the Commission?
Mr. Chairman, we have created an environment in which people who come to the microphone are so uncomfortable that they break up their conversation because they don't know whether or not it's appropriate or inappropriate to ask a question. Some suggestion has been made, and what you do is fine. I find this distasteful. Questions that are not, please don't, anything that we don't answer, I'm going to bring up on their own business in the future because I'm just terribly uncomfortable having people who've elected us ask questions about what's going on in the city, and then we just look at them. The inability, and what took me here is, I understand trying to maintain quorum, and sometimes you just get statements from people that there's really no answer to. They're not very well-phrased questions. But when we can't or refuse to simply tell the public whether or not we hired a new fireman or replaced one, that's just beyond what I'm personally willing to accept as a way to treat people. We got a long speech earlier talking about respect, and I just find that horribly disrespectful for us, and that's just my opinion. Everyone gets to do it the way they want to. But not being able to tell the public whether or not we hired a firefighter or replaced one is just more than I can take. So I'm telling the Commission now, if we choose, I will selectively decide, given them under old business questions that I think should have been answered at the time and have, weren't answered. And it's essentially questions that when someone asks a question that possibly the entire public might be interested in, I think we have an obligation to answer it. Don't like disrupting the meetings, but that's where I'm standing from now on, folks.
Right. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. With respect to what Commissioner Poole is saying and what some of the audience members are saying, I think there may be an issue of clarity there. I don't know if you want to address it or not, but respect to asking questions, I mean, any of these citizens that come here can ask questions. Whether or not there may be an answer at the time that we're at the table, I think that's the appropriate thing to say. Or they can seek answers at a later date or later time, and staff can address those, or they can use this new email system if it's conducive to their question. I understand that there may be a limit to the length of the questions or details that they could put into this email system. It may or may not be entirely sure, but one of the greater things that we need to pay attention to is communication going from the government to the citizens and then from citizens back to the government, making sure that we are fully open, transparent, and communicating back and forth so that we can move forward together. And that way, we don't have so much discord, because a lot of times, we can't answer questions. We just can't. But there may be a direction that we can advise that they take, and I don't want anybody to come here with the impression that they can't answer questions, whether individually we choose to answer them or staff can answer them at this time. I think we should be a little bit more attentive to how we communicate back and forth with the citizens. Ms. Carter, in any respects, I agree. I am simply worried that person tools and the same tools that I observe on every level don't necessarily make this, but it's been just like wish to avoid what is refused. So I'm worried. What I struggle with is selecting some questions. I think the email system is a good one. All of us are ready for questions that are simple. So we'll continue to feel our way forward with this, with my intention to continue to listen. And you're speaking of the time limits. And the fact, because there is a period of the audience, the audience, the state, the state, it matters to state, it's not duty. Mike, I have to disagree with that, but we'll go forward. All right, seeing no one else move to the microphone, let him hand a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I was hearing the sound in here.